I call to order this meeting of the Coweta County Board of Education, Agenda 830, Public Hearing on Intent to Opt Out of Homestead Exemption, 6:00 PM, February the 4th, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Our pleasure to be here is with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board members, members of the public. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight for our third public hearing on House Bill 581. Mike, if you'll start to proceed. Briefly, the decision timeline, Board members, please forgive me, I know you've seen this several times already. You have to have, it's a state-required process, number one. We are at our third public hearing. You can see there, February 4th. Have an additional public hearing at 12 o'clock next week on February the 11th. And then we consider a resolution potentially to opt out of the statewide exemption next week, next Tuesday night. Board members, we'll remind you once again, no decision tonight. It's just a public hearing to be able to listen to the public related to House Bill 581. Mike, if you'll go the next one for me. This process, this decision process is scripted. It is provided for by the legislation. You can see there, all the way to the ad language that's used, where it states that you intend to opt out, that language is required. It was written, I guess, by legislative attorneys somewhere, but that is the required language. Ads have to be 30 square inches. We run all of our required ads leading up to each of our hearings and have adhered to this entire process. Mike, if you'll go the next one. Just a summary. Was approved November the 5th by the voters as a statewide floating homestead exemption. Bit of a change since the referendum was passed back in November, that this has now been designated as a local homestead exemption. And I'll get into more of what that means later, but the long story short is that means that the state gets its money before any exemptions are applied. You can see the actual ballot language there, it's verbatim from the ballot. Shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended so as to authorize the General Assembly to provide by general law for a statewide homestead exemption that serves to limit increases in the assessed value of homesteads, but which any county, consolidated government, municipality, or local school system may opt out of upon the completion of certain procedures? Verbatim ballot language voted on by the voters that allows for this very process that we find ourselves in now. Go the next one, Mike. Some other provisions. It authorizes a special sales and use tax aimed at providing property tax relief. Local school systems are not allowed to participate in that special sales and use tax. It does revise the appeal process and requires an audit or an economic analysis every couple of years. Mike, go the next one. Of course, I've already mentioned November the 5th. None of this could start before January the 1st of 2025. All of this prescribed within the law. And then there's a March 1st deadline for a school district or a municipality to choose to opt out and to file with the Secretary of State's office. As you can see, Board members, this process is incredibly detailed. It's incredibly nuanced. And we have adhered to it up to this point to a T. Mike, if you'll go the next one. Already said, couldn't start before January 1st. Resolution by March the 1st. Have to hold at least three public hearings. Board members, we're having four in the interest to make sure that all voices can be heard. So we'll have our fourth one next week. And then I've already mentioned the public notice that had to be in the local organ there, which is the Times Herald. Next one. As I mentioned earlier, you can see this process is very nuanced, very detailed. It's not an easy process. This is a map that I received late last week from the Georgia School Superintendent's Association of school districts in the state. Green are those that are considering opting out, so they're all going through this process. Red are opting in, and the grays are still undecided or undeclared. So there's quite a few school districts in the state that even with a process that is scripted, that is very difficult and challenging, they are considering the opt-out. Go the next one, Mike. Some differences, I think, that we need to talk about. When you look at that number of school districts that are considering opting out, there are some differences between school systems in cities and counties. School systems cannot levy more than 20 mils in property tax. There is no rate cap for other local entities. School systems are the only one that has that rule applied to them. I already mentioned earlier, school systems cannot request an additional local option sales tax under this legislation. That is an option that is available to cities and counties here. They can request a local option sales tax. In addition, school systems are capped in the amount that they can have in reserve under state law. It's capped at 15% under the law of the state of Georgia for school systems. Cities and counties have no such cap. They can have an unlimited amount in reserve. And the final difference between cities and counties and school systems is that school systems have to pay a five mil local fair share, the equivalent of five mils, to participate in state funding. Municipalities and counties and cities do not have such a requirement to pay five mils to the state of Georgia. Go the next one, Mike. Opting out could potentially mean maintaining local control over tax policy. If you opt in, the state would then, once you hit that 20 mil cap, the state would control local tax policy related to education. Once you hit the 20 mil cap, flexibility for future boards and superintendents would be diminished. The one tool that you do have, and you've exercised it over the years, to be able to finance school system operations, is the millage rate. And it's at the lowest rate in 43 years, and I'll show that here in just a few minutes. Have the ability to try to maintain that. Also, if you opt out, that does acknowledge the unique needs of Coweta County, uniqueness of Coweta County. A state solution provides for the whole state. It doesn't provide for what may be needed here. Also, opting out would allow you to continue to respond to local needs and crises as you see fit and have the flexibility to do so. You still have the ability to respond to rising property values through other homestead exemptions, through lowering the millage rate. You would maintain the ability to continue to do those things as you saw fit if you were to opt out. Mike, go the next one. Look at opting in. There is potential that eventually, if revenues decrease, the millage rate would need to go up to offset those. Giving example, Board members, just last year, there was a decision made at the state level related to employee insurance. For us last year, $5.6 million was the initial increase in insurance costs for us. That was not a decision that was made locally. It was a decision made at the state level. There was a state salary increase last year that was passed on, $5.7 million. Increase in teacher retirement system contribution for the school system was 1.2. And then step increases, well-deserved step increases for our teachers last year. It's $14.1 million increase. There's one common theme about all of those increases last year in our budget. None of those decisions were made locally. They were all made in Atlanta, and those costs were passed down to you. If those, not if, those things will continue to happen. Year after year, costs are passed along to the school system. If you get to a point where the millage rate cap is reached, you can't go past it, revenues decrease, that's where you run into issues, because those mandates are going to continue to come year after year. Flexibility is a key piece for you as you consider whether to opt in or opt out. Go the next one, Mike. If the cap had been in place during this fiscal year, we estimated it would have lost up to $17.4 million. That's with an 8.11% growth last year in the digest and a 4.10 CPI. We're still not clear on exactly what index will be used to measure inflation in this. Will it be a local, or regional, or national inflation indicator that will be used to measure the amount that an assessment could go up? I've already mentioned local option sales tax. That can help local governments, but school systems cannot participate in that. One thing to talk about and to think about is how House Bill 581 might impact your ability in the future if there were to be housing market adjustments or recession. Remember, and I'll talk about it here shortly, austerity cuts back during the Great Recession. State funding went down. Local board here had the flexibility to be able to maintain the millage rate during that time. House Bill 581 could be problematic for you in your ability or in the future boards and superintendents' ability to be able to adjust to those circumstances. Go the next one, Mike. State revenue. We opt in, we become more dependent on state revenue. I'll show you here in just a few minutes why that could be problematic as you look at it. Opting out, if you do have decreases in state funding, you do have the flexibility to adjust to those decreases in state funding. I will mention here, decreases in federal funding. Been a lot of conversation lately about what may happen related to federal funding. Flexibility might be needed to adjust to reductions that could come in federal funding. I know, last week at least, there was a recommended freeze on federal grants. That would have included Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV federal grants. And we are dependent on those. Just for special education-related services in our budget federally, I believe Mr. Chapman told me earlier today, about $16 million is what we spend in IDEA each year. So it's significant. No considerations in House Bill 581 for enrollment growth or any other local changes. 73% of our digest is residential. This is a residential exemption. It's for homesteaded properties only, but it is a residential exemption. So it's something that you need to consider. I've already mentioned the disproportionate impact of unfunded state mandates, which are passed down to us every year. It could certainly have an impact on us there. Go the next one, Mike. Just some key elements. It is an inflationary rate adjustment. The assessed value can increase, but it is capped by a rate that is to be determined. So there could be increased assessment each year. The exemption reduces the amount of property taxes paid by ensuring the assessed value of a home doesn't increase dramatically. That is what it is designed to do. Mike, if you'll go the next one. Substantial property changes is largely like they are now. If you do a substantial change to your property, it can come back and reassess it, and it can up the assessed value. Once a homeowner applies and is granted the exemption, the exemption is automatically renewed every year. And then, a very important point here to remember, Board members, every other exemption that a homeowner may have, senior exemption, veteran exemption, others, this has no effect on those whatsoever. So they maintain all of those exemptions. I know there's been some concern out there that my senior exemption may go away. Absolutely not. This has nothing to do with that. All of those would certainly remain. Go the next one for me, Mike. Historic millage rate, millage rate's 15.41. It's the lowest in 43 years. It's the lowest in metro Atlanta with the exception of Hurd County. You've lowered the rate four out of the last five years, and I've already mentioned to you that you can't levy more than 20 mils. Go the next one, Mike. This is just an example for you. Certainly click on it later if you'd like. It's just millage rate and assess home value and what those school taxes are at those values based on 15.41 mils. Go ahead, Mike. That's just a millage rate comparison. You can see how we compare to other districts here locally and around the metro area. Mike? This is a line graph that shows you historical millage rate. You can see that green line there. It approached, it looked like close to 20, I guess, back in the 70s. Went back up, and now it's down to 15.41. You can see the red line there, Board members, at the bottom, that is debt. Or a bond levy, school system has been debt-free since approximately 2002, 2003. Go the next one, Mike. It's just another graph depicting, it was 2004, actually. It looks like, 2003, 2004, when debt went away. You can see the original senior tax exemption went in 2002, came back in, right, 19, I think it was approved and expanded there in 2020. Go the next one, Mike. Mentioned austerity reductions earlier. This is state funding reductions on schools. You can see there about FY 2009, state funding decreased by, it looks like about $6 million back at the beginning of the Great Recession. You can see there, the next year, FY 2010, state funding was reduced, it looks like about $17 million there for the school district. When, I guess the best way to put it is, when things change, the state will adjust. And when the state does adjust, we have to be able to have the flexibility, school districts have to be able to have the flexibility to make the adjustment and be sure that we can provide the education that our community expects from us. Mike, go the next one. I've already mentioned these differences. Cap of reserves. School systems are the only entity that are, the state doesn't have a cap on their reserves. Cities and counties, there's no cap. They can maintain as much as they like. School systems have to have a cap of 15%. Our current reserve amount allows us to operate the system from July until property taxes do come in in November and December. Currently, if all other funding were to go away, our reserve accounts for about six to eight weeks of operating expenses for the school system. That's what we have. I find it, you know, it's always interesting to me, we're capped at 15%, but when you hear a good financial planner personally or for your small business, they say you want to have six months. We're limited in that way by state law. Go the next one, Mike. Local fair share is something I mentioned to you earlier. This is the amount we're required to pay to the state to participate in state QBE funding. For FY 22, we paid $27.7 million in local fair share. That amount has increased over the last few years to $46.7 million that we pay to the state every year, and it's dispersed to other school systems throughout the state. The three-year decrease, that's a decrease in funding the last three years for us, $18.9 million. Mike, go the next one. It's a line graph that shows you local fair share over the years from about FY 1993 until current, and you can see the trend there. It hasn't gone down. I mentioned earlier the difference between a statewide and a local exemption. This was voted as a statewide exemption. Now they've said it's a local exemption. What that means is, that local fair share comes off the grossed tax digest number before any exemptions are applied to it. So what I'm saying to you, Board members, is that means that the state's going to get that local fair share first. So in effect, it's kind of a double, it's a double hit for a school system. Number comes off the top, then exemptions are applied, and then the school system gets its revenue to be able to educate students. Go the next one. State funding, you can see back in 99, 2000, state funding there is in yellow. It was 60.7% of our budget. Mike, go the next. 2014, 15, it's 51.36%. Go the next one, Mike. This year, it's 46.22% of our budget. So that state, the state funding piece of the budget has closed in to a degree. You got a reserve amount you're limited to. You got a local fair share that continues to increase. You got a millage rate cap, and your state, your percentage of budget that is state-funded continues to shrink. That's the reality of the situation that we have. Go the next one, Mike. Fayette County, a few years ago, they instituted, legislature passed, a 3% cap. You can go at your leisure, click on the article there. They've reduced 70 positions, I think, last year. They have a slightly higher millage rate than we have, I think, at 19.15. It's a glimpse a little bit into the future of what could potentially happen if you were to opt in to House Bill 581. I think there's a larger conversation about just how school systems are funded in general. That's not the question, I don't think, for now, but it is a question maybe for down the road, because it is an imperfect system. Go the next one. Tool you have to be able to operate the school system and to impact property taxes is the millage rate. And I've said this, I think, the last three times to you that I presented this. You don't assess home value. That's a job for somebody else, for the tax assessor. The only thing that the Board of Education does is you levy a millage rate that is necessary to be able to educate students here in the manner that this community expects us to. I don't know. Somebody came last hearing and said there was a lot of what-ifs and couldas and wouldas in my presentation. There's a lot we don't know about this. There certainly is. I wish, I wish I knew it all. I don't know what it may mean 10 years down the road. What I do know is, is we have a deadline by March the 1st that you have to decide whether we're going to opt in or opt out. And then what I have been told is, and what school districts across the state have been told is, you're either in or out at that time. There is no going back and changing. This decision has to be made by the deadline. No action on your part, we've opted in. A resolution, choosing to opt out, and then we've opted out, and that's the choice, unless something else was to come down the road from the legislative level that would change that. So, you know, I leave you with the question there at the bottom that I've had every time, and I think it's the most relevant question, is can we innovate, fulfill our obligations if we opt in and don't necessarily have the local control to do that? Can 581 work for our students in the future? That's the question that is before us. I'll be happy to take any questions that anybody has, Mr. Glover.
Any questions from the board for Dr. Horton before we start public comments? Thank you, Dr. Horton. It's great information.
Thank you.
Before we start the public comment portion, I just want to remind everyone, each speaker will have three minutes. We ask that each one be respectful of the audience, be respectful of each speaker. We want to hear what each and every person has to say in their entirety. This is obviously a public hearing and a public meeting, and this, please conduct it in a professional manner. And that said, we'll go ahead and get started. We do have a number of speakers. The first two are actually maybe holdovers from last Tuesday, so they may not be here. First name is Thomas Countress. Okay. Vashden Smith. Mr. Smith is here, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let's talk numbers. In six years, property tax revenue in Coweta County has surged by 64%. During this same period, student enrollment has remained flat. This isn't sustainable growth. That's called fiscal excess. Now, there are some good, positive things. You maintain, like you said, the lowest millage rate in the metro area at 15.41%. Good. Excellent. You carry zero debt. Also good. Also excellent. But these raise a crucial question. Why, with such strong financial positioning, do you need to opt out of a voter-approved tax limit? In short, y'all already have money. Why do you need more? When revenue grows 64%, while services stay level, something's wrong here. This isn't about needing more money. It's about spending better. You know, obviously, you argued that opting out provides financial flexibility, but real flexibility, at least me, comes from efficient operation, not unlimited taxing power. Yes, there are concerns, unexpected costs, state slashing support, maintaining quality education. All are valid, but the answer to alleviate those questions is not carte blanche, courtesy of the Coweta County taxpayer. Consider some alternatives. Zero-based budgeting to justify every single dollar spent. Regular operational audits to identify inefficiencies. Public-private partnerships. Grant funding for specific programs. And systematic review of administrative overhead. Other school districts across the state and the nation face these same challenges. They're thriving. Why? Financial responsibility. Your recent budget shows millions in discretionary spending. Before asking us to pay more, please prove you're making the most of every dollar you already receive. This isn't about cutting education. It's about cutting waste. Every single dollar that you earn in tax revenue comes out of a family's pocket. Rent, mortgage, food, et cetera. And that applies to anyone, whether they're a hotshot lawyer working in Atlanta, making six figures, or a single mom working at Kroger. You have the means to provide an excellent education to the citizens of Coweta County within reasonable means. That is why I urge you tonight to respect the voters, honor the tax cap, and prove you can be trusted with the financial resources you already have without demanding more. I yield my time.
Good evening, school board members, friends and neighbors. My name is Jonathan Rajala, and I'm speaking in favor of HB 581. I stand before you tonight, not just as a resident of Coweta County, but as a husband, a father, and a hard-working Georgian who believes in securing a better future for our families in Coweta County. Like many of the fine men and women who sit and stand behind me, we all know what it feels like to open our property tax bill every year and wonder, how much more can we take? The cost of living continues to rise. Inflation and shrinkflation have bombarded us since COVID with no end in sight. Now let me ask you a question. Who are the people that voted you into the seats you sit in today? We did. The people of Coweta County. These are the very same people who voted for tax relief, not a tax increase. Voting in favor of this bill brings stability to our families and our community. It keeps us from being taxed out of our homes. It ensures equal measures in how local governments collect revenue, and most importantly, it puts control back where it belongs, in the hands of the people. This bill puts an end to out-of-control property tax increases by capping the amount our home values can rise for tax purposes. This means no more shocking jumps in property taxes that force families, especially our elderly and those on fixed income, out of their homes they've worked so hard for. We want to raise children in our homes. We want to enjoy our grandchildren in our homes. We want to retire and die in our homes, our homes in Coweta County. And HB 581 makes that possible. Tonight, I ask you, what kind of future do you want for our children? A future where they can afford to stay in their hometowns, buy their own homes, and raise their families without fear of endless tax hikes? Or a future where they are forced to sell their homes, their land, and their inheritance? Board members, the choice is yours. Stand up for our elderly. Stand up for your neighbors. Stand up for our children and grandchildren. We are all counting on you to make the right decision. The future is in your hands. Honor God, honor our vote, and vote in favor of HB 581. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Shawna Trepp.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Shawna Trepp. I'm a property taxpaying homeowner in Coweta County. I'm also a mom. My daughter attends a Coweta County public school. There are a lot of passions around this issue, but I would argue that no passion is greater than that of a parent, doing what's in the best interest of the child. And for me, that is a strong and well-supported school system. And for me, that is a strong and well-supported school system, providing a quality education that will set our children up for success in life. How do we tell our children that they are the future and then not invest in them? How do we raise the next generation of doctors, engineers, and CEOs if we continue to underfund their education? High-quality education is an investment in a community's future. By maintaining adequate funding for today's students, we ensure the next generation is prepared to contribute meaningfully to society and leading to a stronger local economy. Well-funded schools attract families, businesses, and investments, which benefit the entire area. School rankings are a major factor when families make decisions on where to live and work. Families will leave or choose other counties if our school systems are not performing well. We want Coweta to be a thriving community. We want investment from businesses to bring high-quality jobs to the area, and we need an educated workforce to do that. Education is not a luxury to be cut out when times are hard. It is integral to building a thriving community and securing the future. You say that we can't afford to opt out, but I say that we can't afford not to. The millage rate has decreased four of the last five years. It's at the lowest rate since 1983. Our schools are not immune to inflation, who here can say that their costs and expenses are the same that they were pre-pandemic. Health insurance costs are rising. Energy costs continue to rise for the schools as well. We cannot expect our schools to operate without accounting for their cost increases. Opting out is not a tax increase. It is maintaining local control of our property taxes and school funding rather than handing it over to the state. The current exemptions, including the elderly exemption for senior citizens of Coweta County, are not affected. Without the opt-out, the taxable value of our properties will no longer fluctuate depending on market factors, but rather based on inflationary percentages. We've all felt high inflation, and it seems that it will only continue rising. Why would we tie our property tax rate to inflation, which is calculated based on the cost of consumer goods and services rather than the market value of our home? And why would we relinquish control of calculating our property taxes to the state? The language on the proposal in November included the statement that any county, government, municipality, or local school system may opt out upon the completion of procedures. It was there in writing when we were casting our vote, the school system may opt out, and they were following the required procedures. Why put an opt-out clause in a constitutional amendment? Because state legislators knew it would create major funding deficits. We don't need the state to take control of our local property taxes. We certainly don't need additional. We need to maintain control of our school systems and invest in Coweta's--
Ms. Trepp, your time is up.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I come to you tonight again to oppose your motion to opt out of Amendment 1, and I do so as a Christian father of a young and growing family. I'll begin with three passages of Scripture. The first, Genesis 1:28A. Then God blessed them and said to them, "Be fruitful and multiply; fill the earth and subdue it." Deuteronomy 6:6-8. And these words which I command you today shall be in your heart. You shall teach them diligently to your children, and shall talk to them when you sit in your house, when you walk by the way, when you lie down, and when you rise up. Ephesians 6:4. And you fathers do not provoke your children to wrath, but bring them up in the training and admonition of the Lord. Christian fathers like myself have duties they must fulfill in obedience to God's Word. We must be fruitful, and we must instruct our children in the training and admonition of the Lord. This means providing them with a thoroughly Christian education. To quote Vody Bakum, "We cannot continue to send our children to Caesar for their education and be surprised when they come home as Romans." While civil magistrates have the authority to levy taxes, the duty of education falls on fathers, not the state. As Christians, we teach our children to honor thy fathers, while your schools demonize men like Christopher Columbus and Thomas Jefferson. We teach them that God made man male and female after his own image. You teach them that we crawled from a puddle of primordial ooze. We teach righteousness and virtue while you teach diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's why you're seeing stagnant numbers in enrollment, while options like homeschool and classical education flourish. And yet, even though your numbers dwindle and our children won't set foot in your halls, you still receive 68% of our property taxes. The Board of Assessors runs unchecked, padding property values, while you and the Board of Commissioners threaten millage rate hikes year over year. You claim it's for the kids, but we know the truth. Based on recent data, the average cost of socialist school in America is roughly $17,000 per student, while the cost of comparable private school is roughly 75% less, sitting at $9,700 per student. If you account for special education, that number still sits at a staggering 58% difference. I'll step out on a limb here and say that perhaps we're not paying for the students to receive a superior education. We're paying for Coweta County's bureaucratic waste. For reference, the Vice President of the United States, J.D. Vance, earns a salary of $235,000 a year, while Superintendent Horton takes home a staggering $343,000 total compensation package. Fathers like myself who live in the real world have had enough, enough waste, enough greed. Our children belong to us, not you, and as the proverbs say, "A good man leaves an inheritance to his children's children." And so, we, the voters, overwhelmingly voted in favor of Amendment 1. We did so because we have a sacred mandate to educate our children and raise them in the pied-a-é of God, sharp arrows in our quivers, ready to fight for the expansion of Christ's kingdom. Doing this requires resources, resources that I can steward more wisely than you ever could. Your motion to opt out of Amendment 1 is a violation of our trust. I implore you to repent and follow the righteous path. I yield my time.
Wow, tried to follow that. I'll be, I'll be, try to be a little more humorous, but I completely concur with the previous statements, by the way. I would like to bring some statistical facts regarding the income of Cowetans, particularly those who are in the middle and lower-middle classes to y'all's attention, and this is in regard to why it would not be a good idea at this time to make it easier to raise taxes on them. In 2000, the average American wage was $32,000 a year. In 2022, it was approximately $64,000 a year. Now, we all know that inflation in various sectors of the economy has really killed certain things. We also know that prices and things like computers have gone down through the years. So, looking for something that was strong to put a true measurement of the purchasing power of working families in Coweta, I looked up the price of an ounce of gold in 2000 and the price of an ounce of gold today. Well, guess what? In the year 2000, the average American worker could purchase, if they wanted to, 115 ounces of gold a year with what they earned in a year. That same average American today could only buy 36. 115 versus 36. Gold has a remarkable staying power through the years. These little coins, they can stand up to almost anything, including a nuclear blast. Think about it. When millennials went into the workforce for the first time in 2000, when the oldest of the millennials went into the workforce, we were on the high of the 1990s. But by 2010, the average American was making, when you look at something real purchasing power, was making less than half of what they were in 2000. And today, it's lower still. But here's an even better example. Homer Simpson, good old Homer. In 1989, Homer Simpson, your lovable, bumbling inspector, right? What does he make? He's a nuclear safety inspector. He makes a normal, middle-class wage, and he can afford to support a wife who's a stay-at-home mom, three children, and live in a two-story, middle-class suburban home. You try finding someone today who can do something like that on a typical, middle-class wage in any suburban county near Atlanta. Not a chance. Folks, it's pretty obvious. We're all stretched. You've got young families here. Do you really need more of their money, more than they do? I think we both know the answer to that. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Tom Suber. I'm coming here today to speak in opposition to the School Board's expressed intent to opt out of Amendment 1. 51,000 citizens of Coweta County voted in favor of the passage of Amendment 1, which is 63.14% in favor. Our nation is a representative republic, and we vote for whom we hope are the most qualified and the most trustworthy individuals to go into the public sphere, represent the people by projecting the people's voice and carrying out the people's dictates. If a school board can flagrantly disregard the dictate of 51,000 citizens in this county who voted overwhelmingly in a free election in the affirmation of Amendment 1, then our county is in really big trouble. It means that our vote is really meaningless. If this board can vote in opposition to citizens according to the arbitrary whims and self-serving desires of several, and ultimately one, a non-elected individual, the superintendent, then we are recipients of an exertion of power that is dictatorial and tyrannical in nature. I read an article which said that the superintendent had expressed a desire to opt out of Amendment 1 in order to keep the management of our taxes local. But I cannot think of a more fitting expression of local tax management than an open and free election that speaks a dictate by a supermajority of voters to their elected representatives expressing their desire for local tax manages, management via their vote. We are asking you to reaffirm our trust and to fulfill your duty to the dictates that were handed down to you by the citizens of this county. We are also asking that you would not enable a non-elected official to exert dictatorial power over our lives. We ask that you would not impose government policies upon us that the citizens of this county did not agree to and are in direct opposition to what the voters in this county dictated to you. The Word of God tells us in Proverbs that when righteous people, those who are good, people with integrity, when those people are in power, the people rejoice, and they are glad. And in the same verse, the proverbs tell us that when the wicked rule and are in power, people weep, they mourn. We need leaders who are morally upright and have an interest in seeing us, the people, rejoice over the good and faithful decisions that our local government has made in our name and by our power. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zahira Billings, and I represent District 2. I want to thank everyone for being here to discuss an issue that affects all of us, the future of our schools. I'm here to urge our district to opt in to the proposed plan because opting out could lead to devastating cuts in the state funding. This including quality basic education, local fair share, and the equalization grant. These programs are essential to our schools, and we cannot afford to lose them. Here's why opting in is the right choice. One, our students deserve better. QBE funding ensures our schools have the resources to hire great teachers, maintain safe facilities, and offer programs that prepare our students for success. Opting out risks losing these resources, and our students will suffer. Two, protecting critical funding. Local fair share and equalization grants help level the playing field for districts like ours. Without them, we'll risk falling behind. Opting in safeguards these funds and ensures equality for our schools. Three, avoiding financial strain. We've already faced cuts this year. Opting out could mean deeper cuts, leading to larger class sizes, fewer extracurricular activities, and fewer resources for our children. We can't let this happen. Four, strengthening our community. Strong schools mean strong community. When our schools thrive, property values rise, businesses grow, and Coweta County becomes a better place to live for all. Opting in is an investment in our future. Some may argue that opting out preserves local control, but the real risk is losing the funding our schools depend on so greatly. This is about our students, our teachers, and our community. Let's choose to protect them. I urge you to stand with me, a mother of three who pays taxes and visually see things contribute every day to our school systems. Let us protect our schools, our funding, and our future. Together, we can ensure Coweta County remains a place where every child has the opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Next is Linda Mink. Okay, we can, we'll come, we can come back to Ms. Mink.
I'm pretty sure they're going to do this. They always do what Keith Horton says. They aren't going to stop now. 51,000 voters, doesn't matter to them. So, we must decide what we are going to do based on what they do. What do I mean by that? I don't know. Right now, I'm thinking maybe recall all of them. So, look around tonight, see all the people you're sitting near that you've been talking to before and that you've gotten to know. We need to continue to get to know each other. We've got to keep this movement going. If we do, we will win eventually. Maybe not right now, but we will eventually. So, y'all get to know each other because we got to get back in touch and keep this movement going.
We'll go back to Linda Mink.
Thank you for waiting. I guess I'm going to sound like a broken record. The same thing that I discussed last week. You have a problem with out-of-control spending. You obviously do not know how to budget. That is a fault with your central office. It's not with your teachers. It's not with your bus drivers. It's not with the sanitation workers. It's not with the food service workers. It's you. You cannot manage a budget. If you could, we wouldn't be having meetings like this. Cut central office by 50%, and the rest of you take a 25% pay cut. That's a good start. Get your budget under control because, obviously, you're not intelligent enough, you don't have the expertise to do this. It's not hard. Moms and dads out there are doing it at home right now in order to pay mortgages, to pay car payments, groceries, gas, doctor's appointments, everything else. And somebody, you made the comment that senior citizens, this isn't going to impact senior citizens. Let me tell you what happens with senior citizens when their kids get in trouble. Senior citizens reach into their retirement and help them bail out. If they can't afford, if they're squeezed so tight, or they pay for the college education of their children. Families need this money. You do not need the money.
Let's please keep the applause to a reasonable level, please, between each speaker, so I can call the next one. The next is Akery, and I apologize, I cannot read the last name, Sunwald, maybe?
Hey, excuse me, sir. Where's my microphone? Sir, sir, we have students in here, and I heard what you said. Don't, no one's what you just said, and if you say it again, I'm going to ask them to have you leave. I'm looking at you, okay?
Akery Sunbold, thank you, guys, for having me here. So, after last meeting, I went home and I decided to look up the definition of public servant. What the internet yielded was government official and employee. I work in the capacity of service to the public, but different than you guys. I work in healthcare, as I mentioned last week. I decided to reflect on what makes someone a good public servant, including myself. First of all, the willingness to serve, I think, is very valuable. Certain characteristics come into play too, and there are many that make one a good public servant. But the ones that I feel are valuable to me are kindness, compassion, and empathy. And also being a good, active listener, where I can take the information presented to myself and make good decisions for the people that I serve. So, as a healthcare worker, patients come to me and ask for help on issues they cannot accomplish themselves. And sometimes that's a simple phone call, and sometimes that's staying really late. I've never once gone home and regretted going to bat for a patient. I'm in a reverse role here. I'm standing before you, the Board, asking for you to go-- I'm standing before you, the board, asking for you to go to bat for me, the homeowner, as well as community members that feel as I do. I know not all do, but the ones that do. I'm asking for your help in keeping the homestead exemption as is. So people will remember one another for different reasons. They'll remember you for your sense of humor, for example. They'll remember you for a good skill set. They remember you for your decisions, good or bad. Most often, they'll remember you for your bad decisions. I ask that you be remembered for standing up for the community of Coweta County homeowners. Vote with empathy in mind for the Coweta County homeowners. Keep our homestead exemption. I yield my time. Thank you.
Next is Dan Miller.
Good evening. I feel a little less prepared than everyone else that had something written out, but I've had several discussions already today, so I feel like I'm prepared for furthering those discussions. And thank you for the presentation and explaining the complexity of the issues coming around as far as the finances go. But I do want to kind of address a couple of things that were in there. One of the issues that was noted was that if the cap was in place this year, that would have led to a $17 million reduction in funding, which could be made up by a simple .06 increase in the millage rate. And you have plenty of room for that. So what we're looking at here is, yes, we've had a lower millage rate than most of the other areas for a good amount of time. But what's left out of that discussion is every time property valuation, which is half of the equation, has gone up, this board has chosen not to accept the full rollback rate, which has increased the taxes for the taxpayers of this county over and over and over. And we have asked multiple times, over and over, to roll those rates back to the suggested rollback rate, and that has not been accomplished. What you're seeing here is the result of the fact that we don't trust you to manage this budget anymore. We no longer trust that, and we have to be able to trust our leadership. And we have to be able to trust the people that we elected, and we simply do not. That is why people voted to take the control to a different level. That is why people voted to get their taxes under control. And that is why we're all here, or many of us are here, to represent that the majority of the taxpayers voted to have things put in place to control this. Now, the point has been made several times that we all voted for legislation that allows opt-out. I would be willing to bet that the majority of people in this room would have preferred that that language not be in the vote because I would have taken it out myself.
Again, I'm going to ask that please refrain from making comments while the speaker is speaking. It's very disrespectful, and it's hard for us to follow each speaker with side comments and side conversations going on.
Good evening. Dr. Horton, Mr. Glover, board members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It's good seeing you. First, I want to commend you for the outstanding job you have done managing the largest transportation system, food service program, and being one of the largest and not the largest employer in Coweta County is not easy. You have led us through COVID, the demolition and rebuild of a new high school, which could not have been done as smoothly without the reserve funds that you strategically had in place. Along with that, you are responsible for 30-plus schools, the Nixon Center Performing in Visual Arts, the Evergrowing Central Education Center, as well as other facilities like the One Way and the Night. You have managed to do that and many other things while maintaining the lowest millage rate in over 40 years and while also meeting high academic standards for approximately 23,000 students. Job well done. That brings to my point why I'm here tonight. It is my opinion that you are at a crossroads with funding our schools. House Bill 581, if approved, will make you, future superintendents and future board members, more dependent on state government. Some there are not allies of public schools, and their voting records of diverting funds from local school systems is evident, even though the Georgia State Constitution states it shall be a primary obligation for the state, for Georgia, to fund it. Simply stated, you will be very restricted in what you can do and the services you can provide our school system. I'm here tonight as a retired grandfather that lives on a fixed income and has four grandchildren in our school system. I've been very pleased with the qualitative instruction, education, and they've received as well as it was when my two daughters were in school here. I trust that you continue to provide the level of services for our grandchildren and other students in Coweta County School System. With that said, I hope you opt out of 581 while you can and maintain the different funding options that you presently have. One of the primary responsibilities that you know is the school board members provide funding for the school system. Decades ago, when I was on the board, we were facing a difficult and controversial decision. I went to a good friend of mine, Mr. Henry Seldon, and asked him his opinion. Mr. Seldon said, "Mullins, do what's right and you don't have to look back." I hope tonight you do, later when you vote, that you vote to opt out of 581, do what's right for the students of Coweta County. Thank you.
Next, we have Tom Suber. Okay. I guess we have you on the list twice for some reason.
Good evening. I'm opposed to the opt-out. Let's be clear, opting out of Amendment One isn't just bad policy, it's political betrayal. This wasn't a close call, it was a landslide. Voters across Georgia, including 51,000 in Coweta County, demanded relief. They voted to cap out-of-control property taxes and protect homeowners, retirees, and working families from being taxed out of their homes. The message was undeniable. Cap taxes, respect the voters, and stop the greed. Let's be real, this wasn't even controversial. In the Georgia House, 164 members voted yes, only two voted no. Neither represent Coweta County. In the Senate, 52 members voted yes. Not a single one opposed it. The overwhelming majority of legislators, the Coweta delegation, the voters of Georgia, and the voters of Coweta County all agree this is the right thing to do. I hope this board agrees as well. Yet, you're considering rejecting that mandate, ignoring the will of the people, and undermining the very taxpayers you were elected to serve. That is not leadership. That is a mistake. But mistakes can be corrected. Coweta County voters aren't here to fight their school board. We're here to be heard. We stand for the families, the retirees, and the homeowners who put their trust in this process, and we expect you to do the same. This is your opportunity to do the right thing, to listen to the people, honor their vote, and prove that you stand with the voters, not against them. The choice is yours. Stand with us, respect the will of the people, and you'll have our trust. Because at the end of the day, Coweta County believes in accountability, fairness, and leaders who serve with integrity. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Neil Sullivan. I'm a new Coweta County resident. Moved here six months ago from Peachtree City. My first vote in Coweta County, I voted for HB 581, although I have supported public education in many writings and led East Blast in Fayette County. It's unfortunate the legislature even put this opt-out in the bill. The voters voted, and now they've put you in a very bad situation. I oppose any opt-out. But the superintendent used my words from the Fayette citizen, I have a column there, and he talked about where Fayette, two years ago, the voters voted 70% to put an LV7, Homestead 3% cap in place. They did that because the board put a East Blast vote in 2018. I was the chairman. They wrote, they gave a list, and Booth Middle School was $10 million of rehab funds. After the vote passed, they built brand-new Booth Middle School for $46 million. They lost, and the voters went to the House Representative, who put the LV7 on the ballot, 70% passed it. And now Fayette County had to cut 70 school-based positions this past budget, and as Dr. Horton will tell you, the benefit numbers, the pension numbers, they're going to get cut again. So the question, the interesting thing, though, the three board members who voted yes on purchasing the school got reelected. So I'm not going to say you'll be kicked out, but I will ask, what do you think happens? That same representative represents part of Coweta County. Are we going to get the opportunity to vote for an LV7 instead? There'll be no opting out of that. Or the next East Blast, does that get voted down? So the question is, do you want, no, do we keep the vote of the, do you veto the votes of the voters? Or do you keep our trust? Do we work together to find options and, trying to think of the word, lobby our legislature to make other options, to make East Blast towards operational, at least half of it? And then finding options where taxes don't change, but we get the schools the money they need? My wife is a retired educator. I believe in public education, but I worry if you do this, what the ramifications are going to be. As an accountant, I'm far better writing than I am publicly speaking, so I'm going to stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton and the board. It's the first time I've spoke here. I don't know any of you, but I will tell you this, I moved to Coweta County back in 2021. I moved from Douglas County, and it was a great awakening when I got here. The taxes, we bought our home, I added a little outdoor shed or garage to my house, and my assessment went up about $140,000. And with that, I found out in Coweta County, we pay school taxes. I'm 70 years old. My wife's fixing to turn 75. We're on fixed income. Now, I worked 43 years in public safety. I worked EMS, I worked fire, and I worked law enforcement. And during that period of time, I worked multiple jobs. I worked two, you know, two jobs, sometimes three at one time, trying to make ends meet, working those extra jobs. One thing I was taught when I was young was to use retirement plans. So I started doing that, and I put back every chance I got. And my wife was, she's a nurse, we met. Now, this year, we'll get a break, but we won't get it till next year when she, because she's 75, this year, we don't get to take that. But I want to draw some attention to the 2023 millage rates in surrounding areas. I noticed, and we moved from Douglas County, that their rate is 19.5. Coweta County is 15.41. Now, what I want to tell you about this, at age 62, I didn't have to pay any school taxes, period. This past year, my school taxes in my residence is about $2,500, and it just keeps going up. And I shouldn't have to pay any school taxes, and I appreciate the school board. We've got family that have been educators and still are. And so what's going to end up happening is, is you just keep going up on this. You've got to start managing the money that you get. I heard some say earlier about, you know, grants. The grants are still going to be there. And as Mr. Horton had said earlier, you talk, talking about things like, don't know what's going to happen. It may happen, it may not happen. These are things that we don't know, I'll be honest with you. I serve right now with the public. I'm a local councilman down in my district, and we've had to looked at opting out. I'm going to ask y'all to opt out. There's got to be a better way of funding the school system. I paid for my kids to go to private school, and I paid them their way through college. And I finished paying it off in '67, but I'm going to say, stop doing the tax increases. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here this evening in opposing to opt out of the HB 581 that we, the people in majority, voted for on November 5th. We voted for a very needed tax relief, and what has occurred in this country over the last four years has been devastating to many families. You will still have the option to increase our taxes via the millage rate if you decide to bring that to the table that is not being taken away from you. The amendment cap is on home values, and being that you all do not participate in that process and would still have control over millage rates, this should be a no-brainer. There has not been substantial growth on the student side of the county, but our administrators are many and have continually increased over the last few years. There are a lot of employees that we, as taxpayers, pay that we don't know what they do exactly. Why do we have such a surplus of administrative personnel? I told the county commissioners a while back to tighten up their budget, and I believe you all should do the same. Maybe we need a Coweta Doge Task Force created. That would be interesting. I, for one, have not enjoyed-
Please, we cannot, Ms. Meehan, stop, please stop the timer. I'm sorry, I can't.
I understand.
Please refrain from the comments or clapping or anything else while the speaker is speaking. That is very disrespectful, and this is a professional meeting, and I'm going to conduct it as such.
Thank you, sir.
Apologize, Ms. Meehan.
Thank you. I, for one, have not enjoyed my property tax value increase to the extent that it has over the last few years. We are up 71% in home value since 2021. We built in 2019. We have made no improvements, but somehow we are 71% higher in value in just a five-year time. As much as it's been acknowledged that you all have lowered the millage rate over the last few years, it doesn't negate property values being inflated, which has helped make up the difference for you. We need the cap. I had the pleasure of attending a hearing just yesterday with the Board of Equalization and was truly shocked by how little attendance there was. With all that's going on, I really expected more people to be there to dispute their appeals, however, I digress. The taxpayers in this county need and voted for a break. As we patiently wait for the president to correct many issues we face as a nation, we rely on our local elected officials to do the most they can and in the best interest of the citizens they represent. And you all have an opportunity to do that next week. To close, the people of this county may not care about the perversion and filth in our school media centers and bookshelves in some classrooms, DEI training and the implementations brought upon us, and other progressive garbage that's been presented to our kids, but they care about their hard-earned money. The citizens will not forget this come reelection time. I have become very familiar with the board's way of doing things, and I'm very aware that you have probably already decided what you guys are going to do, so nothing that we say really matters. These meetings are simply held because the Gold Dome said so. So I hope at least a few of you will find a change of heart in this decision over the next week. I ask you to pray about it and let the Lord guide you in this decision. Vote as an individual and not as influenced by your fellow board members. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to address the old adage, "It is for the children." Yes, property taxes that we pay go toward educating, feeding, and taking care of our children- children during the day. But don't forget that us parents and grandparents also need that money to house, feed, and take care of our children's needs at home. The parents and grandparents have spoken loudly that enough is enough, and that we expect you to honor our vote by opting in to cap property tax increases.
Next is Jessica Richards.
Hello, board. I'd like to talk to you about not opting out of HB 581. I voted for this because I wanted the counties to be held accountable at a state level. And this cute map that we had in the presentation, we show all these green counties that are opting in, while Cobb County School Board was recently found guilty of embezzling on a massive scale. So I don't really care what other corrupt school boards are doing. So I, that don't really find that persuasive. I moved here several years ago from Utah, which is ranked number 10 in education, has the lowest per capita spending on pupils in the nation, yet we're ranked number 10. Georgia, as a state, is ranked number 26. Our super, our superintendents at Dr. Horton's level are paid on an average of $70,000, not So if Superintendent Horton makes $343,000 a year, plus a fat pension, which most of us will never even have a pension, that is in the top 3% of salaries in the United States. I would then expect the Coeida County schools are in the roughly top 3% of schools in the nation. Now, since Georgia's 26th in the nation, these numbers are actually just within Georgia. So take these numbers and then put it as 26th of that. Atkinson Elementary and Clinton Elementary are tied for last place. They are 937 to 1,249th in Georgia. They're so low that they just stopped counting the rankings. Jefferson Parkway is 934th in Georgia. Our co-sergeant elementary is 842nd. And we go to our three high schools. East Coeida is 171st, Noonan High is 148th, and Northgate High is 65th. Teachers in comparison are paid roughly $45,000 to $50,000 a year in this county. Bus drivers are 12 to 18 an hour with no benefits. There are teachers in our Coeida schools asking on Nextdoor and Facebook for textbooks for their students. There are kids sitting out in the heat and cold because there aren't enough bus drivers, and so they have to wait for the entire route to finish to come pick them back up. There really is no reason to support the Coeida School Board, to override our vote, to further locally control our taxes when, one, we already voted for them not to, and they are appropriately, aren't appropriately spending the money they have. There needs to be definitely better budget running skills. Maybe you can go to my hometown of Utah and take some lessons from them. In addition, the superintendent has three highly-paid assistant superintendents making anywhere from $120,000 to over $200,000 each. So between the four of them and roughly $1 million in revenue just for them, they still failed to write a simple budget that actually serves our students. Coeida school system administrators don't need more of our money. They need to be held accountable. It's not going to the kids, it's going to an ineffective administration. And they've taken plenty of the money already, and they're spending it on themselves. Thank you.
Next is Chris Moon.
Good evening to the members of the school board. There's a, there's a saying that all politics is local. I never realized how true that is until this past year. We citizens have a duty to vote for the policies we espouse, as well as the people we want to represent us in implementing those policies. There's never, there's been a lot of talk about unelected bureaucrats making policy that affects all of our daily lives. We have a perfect example of it right here in this county, in this room. We have a superintendent who is unelected, who is telling us that we, the voters, can be overturned with the vote of this board. Read the room. Our county citizens voted for this amendment. You do not know their budgets or finances, nor do you seem to care. Just remember, if you outprice living in this county, causing people to move, there will be no customer base for you. Therefore, no need for you. Keep this in mind when you determine how you vote. You may think we can be replaced, but we know you can be replaced. Thank you.
Next is Claudia Kessler. I think I've read that right.
I'm going to move this over. Sorry, I don't think I'm tall enough. All right. Good evening, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I speak so that we do not opt out of House Bill 581. Opting out of this exemption could have significant consequences for the residents that we all serve, and I believe it's important to consider the broader implications before making such a decision. As we have mentioned, we have seen why we shouldn't opt out from various instances, including increased tax burden to homeowners, negative impact on our community's stability, and it would undermine our local economic health. Looking around the room, I have seen plenty of generations of people who have lived here and supported this community, and I'm sure have supported your schools. And I think ultimately that if we opt out, that would be detrimental to how much we would thrive as a community once more. The long-term effects of this, I can speak to, are on the housing market. That's simply just what I work in. You risk diminishing the attractiveness of Coeida County as a school system if you were to opt out. And I say this because a lot of the data that was presented is very circumstantial when I look at it. I don't know how your board operates, but I report to a board myself, and you need to be asking yourself some of the questions of, you know, the data that contains state funding graphs, the reductions, the millage rate approval, none of that is present to prior to COVID. Most of that data was presented at 2018, 2020, and 2022 in some cases. Realistically speaking, it is a bit concerning that all of this seems rushed. I do want to inform you that part of my job is I am lobbying on this kind of event. I work with home builders in the state of Georgia, and they actually lobbied for the House Bill 581. It is concerning that it wasn't brought up, that the amendment for this bill is House Bill 92, and it is currently being passed, well, it is in favor, passed by the House Committee as of the 29th of January, where they are amending the timeframe from March 1st to May 1st. That would give enough time for the schools post-exams and enrollment to take that into consideration as you see fit with your budget. In conclusion, opting out of this homestead exemption could have significant consequences for our community. And I think it is just a point to note that many people state that this doesn't have an effect on people, but I can tell you that from the increase in power bills in Coeida County, or the increase in your water bills, or the new facilities that are popping up, everything has a cost. And something that I was taught at a very young age was that everybody is replaceable, and that may seem true to trickle down to wherever your job is. Thank you.
Next is Richard Blesz.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everybody. I heard some amazing people here. I don't want to take too much time. I did not have time to prepare a statement. I would just like to say that everybody in Georgia, everybody in Coeida, everybody wanted, voted for this referendum in November. And for you to sort of take yourself out of it is against the will of the voters of Coeida County, and I disagree with that. So I'm against you opting out. Is that right? I'm against you opting out. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Next is Sean Miller. And Mr. Miller, if you'd put the microphone back straight. Thank you.
I'll do my best. Good evening. I'm Sean Miller. I'm opposed to opting out. I brought a graphic. Fayetteville County School Board spends an average of $15,000 per student, and we spend $20,000 per student. What is our return on investment? I looked at the state audits from 2014 to 2024. The red line is the revenue's actual spending, and the green line is the inflation rate. Inflation 32%, and spending 77%. You're overspending. At the same time, enrollment is about 3%, which is unsustainable. I would like to see a master plan. How is Coeida County becoming the most sought-after place to buy a house and live? This doesn't work. It's not sustainable. There is a term I learned in college called town and gown. That's the relationship between a college and the surrounding town. They work together, they need each other, and they find ways to grow together. Look at Starkville, Mississippi, Austin, Texas, UGA, LSU, any college or university. The town and university have a relationship. We value our Coeida County school system. We have, what we have here is a disconnect. What you're doing and the way you're doing it looks bad. You even tell us what we are, you don't even tell us what we're getting for the spending. Here's the truth. You can't exist without us. And we need people to run our school system. Let's just be honest. So let's start working this out. Let's start with affordability, a cap on spending no greater than inflation, opting in to Amendment 1, and having the highest average test scores in the state of Georgia. How about that? You win, we win. You know, this, this is, this works for us. And if we can shoot for those goals, maybe we can get it. And this will attract new home buyers to our county, and those new home mortgages will be the source of the school's revenues. Let's make it affordable for everyone by opting in. Let's refocus on improving our county school system's value and image so new home buyers want to move and live here and spend their tax dollars here because it's a great value. Thank you.
Next is Carol Miller.
I wouldn't be in your focus for anything right now. I tell you, you guys got a lot, I don't envy you at all. You've had compelling arguments. I'm sorry I do that. You think the way I talk at home, I talk like this. You've had all of these compelling arguments on both sides, and I would imagine that you're just probably like this right now because you're hearing all of us express our frustration. And I'm sure you're frustrated too, because you guys are good guys. You're smart. You wouldn't be there where you are if you weren't. You know, and you've got a heavy-duty decision ahead of you. I just, you'll be in my prayers. I know that's been said a lot, but I sincerely mean that you do. Thank you for letting us speak. I'm going to keep this short and simple. I started not to speak tonight because, you know, you get sick of seeing the same old faces here over there. Okay, okay. What's she going to say? She's going to say the same old thing again. No. But I just want you to listen to the voters. Just listen to us. The majority of us voted in November about what we desire for you to opt out on this. I don't know all the legalese, I don't know all the politicalise and all the terms. I could take your appendix out, but I can't do what you're doing. I'll tell you, I can't do that. So, but please, we homeowners already pushed. We are paying higher prices for everything. Our taxes, everything. All the charts and all the stats and all that stuff, it doesn't tell the whole story. The bottom line is if you opt out, our taxes will increase. Maybe not this year, but it will over time. All those 30s and 40s people have got, they bought homes and they're settled in, they're going to start looking at these higher and higher and higher taxes as it goes on, and higher things, prices of things that goes on. It's not going to be a good picture. This is going to affect everybody. Everybody in the county, school employees, retail, factory workers, retired people, wealthy people, poor people, fixed-income people, everybody's going to be affected if they have a home. Will the incomes rise to meet those taxes? No, don't think so. I sure wish I could use that extra $200 they took out of, they raised our taxes $200 a month. Property taxes went up. I sure could use that now, I tell you. Look down the line to the implications and think for yourself. Think for yourself. Go home and meditate on this. Think about this. And look at everything. Look at the big picture. Look at the implications of what opting out is going to do. People are going to suffer. They're going to suffer. It's going to be hard. I already have patience. Sorry. Okay. Don't let this be your legacy, okay? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Next is Sandy Painter.
Good evening. I ran for school board in 2016. I came in second, so I'm not up there today. If I was, I would be voting to not opt out. And that is for the sake of the people that are sitting here and that voted you in. And so, just as you've been entrusted with the votes of the people, which in a sense makes them your employer because they're the one paying for the salaries, we're asking that you hear us and that you honor the voice of the people. When HB 581 was voted with a very high, "Yes, we want this," it was a voice of people crying out, saying, "There's so much pressure on us right now financially. We need a break." We're seeing things like that happen at the federal level, where they're saying, "What can we do to get rid of excess? What can we do to get rid of extra bureaucracy, which is taking money away from where it should really be?" I think that what we're hearing from a lot of the people today is, "We're all for the children receiving an excellent education. Everyone here wants that. That's an understood. But we believe that there is spending that is not being used in the best way possible. And we believe that things can be adjusted so that money is better used." I stepped into a position after coming in second for the school board, which is in a nonprofit missions organization, and I handle all the money coming in and out of it. People give us money, and we go to the nations, and we're making a difference. You'd be amazed at the difference we're making in the nations with what would seem a small budget. We ourselves sacrifice so that we can send the money to where it counts. This has been the greatest honor of my life. We're asking you to do the same thing, and I thank you for considering that. And I'll just say that I think part of what I hear in some of the attitudes here is that people are saying, "We're not trusting that you're really overseeing our funds well." I do that very carefully with the missions organization I work with. We're asking you to do the same for us. Thank you.
Next is Donna Garbo. Is Donna here for last call? Okay. Okay. So you wish not to speak?
I wasn't planning on it. Could say a word.
Come to the podium. Your, your name is on the list. You have the opportunity.
All right, thank you. That's Donna Galbo, by the way. Board and superintendent, I've lived in Coeida County now since 1990, and since 1992, I've been a homeowner. I have no children, and there have been times when I kind of resented the taxes that I have to pay. But I know that the children are our future. I know that's a little cliche, but I know that that is the truth, so I resolve myself with it. But now that I- But now that I am facing senior life, I'm 71 now. I ended up having to go out of work a few years earlier than I planned because of some health issues. So this year, it was the first time I really got sticker shock on having, it's the first year I really was short on my escrow. And when you're on, you know, a limited fixed budget, it does make it very difficult to have to come up with that kind of money. And I'm thinking I can understand, you know, the presentations that we've had, that there can be pros and cons to both options. I think when you present your decision, it would be really nice to see a chart of opting in, opting out, pros and cons, why you make the decision that you do, in particular after seeing all of the input from the community. And I do agree that I would rather see you opt out. There was one thing that I did hear in, I believe it was the superintendent's presentation. Can I ask a question now or? Not now? Okay. Okay. All right. So I did have a question about, in my mind, about sales tax, and where I'm going with that in my mind is, I don't know how many homeowners we really have moving in anymore, but we sure have a lot of renters, and they have children. So if I understood something that I heard properly on opt-in versus opt-out, we could be missing out on rental, people that are renting paying into the system. That's it. Thank you.
Next is Grant Van Brimmer.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Board, citizens, grace, mercy, and peace to you from God the Father and our Lord Jesus Christ. My name is Reverend Grant Van Brimmer. I have the privilege of pastoring at Trinity Reformed Church here in Noonan. I come before you today wearing my clerical collar, which signifies who I am to serve. My collar is a sign that I'm bound to the will of my Master. I am a servant of King Jesus, and I am only permitted to do as He's commanded me to. You too are bound to the will of others. You too may only function in a capacity fitting your station. You're elected by the people in this community and are only free insofar as your constituents allow. You represent us, and your people spoke plainly on the matter of House Bill 581. The Bible teaches those in authority are servants of the people, not masters over them. In Romans 13, the Apostle Paul writes that governing authorities are God's servants for your good, and that's what you should do. It's prescriptive. When King Gero Boam ignored his people's plea for tax relief, he split his kingdom. His arrogance destroyed what his father Solomon had built, and this ancient lesson speaks directly to our situation today. You may say you need the money for our schools, but what good is a well-funded school system if families can't afford to live in this county? Who cares about more revenue if you lose the trust of your people? Your choice is clear. Honor the voter's will and protect our families, or override them and bear the moral burden of that decision. God hears the cries of His people, and He sees the motivations of each one of your hearts. Nothing is hidden from His eyes. At the end of all things, each of you will answer to the One living in true God for how you carried out your duties. So I urge you, keep the homestead exemption. Show that you respect the will of the people. Demonstrate that you're committed to true stewardship. Remember, you serve the people of this county and through them, a higher authority. Your decision will echo far beyond this room and long after this meeting ends. And it isn't a question if, but when. You will bend the knee to King Jesus and confess Him as Lord and give an account. If you choose to do it now, you invite His blessing. If you refuse, you invite His correction. If you want to be at peace with Him and bring peace to your sphere of influence, obey Him. Carry out your duties in truth and with integrity. Keep Coeida, or keep Noonan in Coeida County, a city of homes. Don't contribute to making it a place of burdens. Thank you for your time.
Next is Mike Nixon.
Good evening, and I'm here in opposition to opting out. I've listened to Dr. Horton speak to the difficulties that you have, and the relationship that this Board and the superintendents have to the state, and how you manage money, and what to look out for, and historically what's happened. Historically, who can you depend upon, who can you not, wanting to be independent of the state? But that relationship is what I've heard a lot from Dr. Horton's presentation, the difficulties embedded in managing such a system as you all do. So my hat's off to you for those difficulties. What happened, I think, in November was the spirit of the vote was to control our taxes because of the valuation of our properties that are skyrocketing. So that vote was a very, very simple vote, and I think it was well-meaning, and it meant something, which is why you saw so many people support Amendment 1. What I think that you are so focused on, because you have to, you're focused on your relationship with the state. This is the relationship that you're dealing with, and I think this is the relationship that is paramount. There have been some great speakers with a lot of great data, a lot of information. I hear, though, a lot of community leaders, the Millers here, and our new friend from Peachtree City, the accountant who claims he is not a public speaker, and I would argue with that because he did a great job, because what he spoke to was what's important is the relationship with us and how we work together, and how we have to have trust between each other to make this work, and that we're the highest priority, and that's what that vote in November stated. Thank you.
Mr. Nixon was our last speaker that had signed up. Are there any Board members that wish to make any comments?
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I want to point out that no vote will be taken tonight, obviously, and no decision has been made. We have one more public comment session on, I think it's at noon next Tuesday, on the 11th, before the regularly-scheduled Board meeting that evening. So again, thank everyone for coming. Safe drive home. I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.